Welcome to the, wow, this is loud, Bothell City Council Meeting on May 9th, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All council members are here. Is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none. Visitor comment? Oh, I'm not ready for that. So this is the time that the public has to speak to the council. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name and audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without permission of the mayor. And the first sign up we have is Tom Glynn and Kate Callagie. Go ahead, go to the podium right over there.
I'll try to talk loud enough. I didn't plan to be here. This is my wife's idea. And she couldn't make it tonight, so here I am. So bear with me. We've been residents in Bothell for eight years now. Have loved this place very much. We're just east of Thrasher's Corner, a mile up Malpey Road in Chestnut Trails. And anyone who knows that area knows that over the years, the traffic has just gotten horrendous. It's making living in the area very uncomfortable and unpleasant. And I know you guys, ladies, are doing a great job representing us. I was here a few weeks ago when the state regional transportation people were here, and I thought you made a good pitch for Bothell. But obviously, we're left out of the bigger loop. But in the meantime, in the meantime, we have issues here. And my wife is not happy, and we all know what happens when you have an unhappy wife. So, and I'm just not speaking for her or me. I think I'm speaking for everybody in Bothell. So, I've been put up to check out what you're doing about our transportation system here within the Bothell area. And I'd like information to get together with the committee in charge of that and see what's being done. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'll give you the city manager's right here. She has a business card, and we'll get you hooked up with the right people so you can get the information you need.
Thank you.
Yep. Next is Ginger Warren.
Hi. I've seen a couple of these online, so I'm hoping that I can do it the right way. Thank you, Mayor and council for hearing me and my family today. A little backstory about me. My name is Ginger, and I've enjoyed living in Bothell for seven years. We moved here from Seattle to buy a home, and that was when the houses were affordable. And it was also when the revitalization signs started to go up, and we were really excited. And it's been wonderful to see all the progress that's happened. I come to you today to speak on behalf of a revitalized skate park. And I know that that was talked about last week, but I'm here to remind you again, because I know that there might, it might be fresh in your minds about Block A and furthering that notion that that could be an actual feasible spot next to Bothell Landing where families of all ages could come and enjoy. And I know that city is always tight with finances, and, but it's, as you walk around Bothell, it's like the land just keeps disappearing and disappearing, and you see McMenamins, and you see all of these wonderful retail spaces and new apartment buildings and things like that. And I feel like, I think now is the time to really try to reserve a spot for the community, and hopefully get a skate park in to replace the little dinky one we had in there before. My husband and my older daughter were actually the two last people to use that skate park when the city came and said it's closed. Now it's private property. And they were putting it into storage. And I do hear that the pieces may need to be slightly revamped, possibly. But I'm a willing citizen, and I know there are others here too, who are here tonight to start whatever needs to be done, whether that's community fundraising. I think you can get people behind that. Crowdsourcing, sponsorships, I really think that you can get people behind that. There's resources to use. I know my husband's talked to John Keats, and he knows something about skate parks. So I brought a few professional, well, a few supporters here with me today. My two daughters are quite reserved, but they'd like to possibly speak to you. That might be the next person.
Great, thank you. Are they willing to come up? Oh, there it is. I'm sorry. Next person is Lexi Warren?
My name is Lexi Warren. I am seven years old, and I love to ride my bike and scooter and my skates. And I would love to have a skate park to do that on. So please put a skate park in so me and my family and other families can have fun.
That was nice. Thank you. Well, I'm sold on the skate park. I don't know about you guys. Ginger, could we get your contact information and give it to the city manager, and we'll be in contact with you?
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Actually, do I have your, oh, can I give her your phone number that you wrote on here?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rainan Bothell, and I think that it would be good to have a skate park because I've been doing an online school, so I finish before everybody else finishes, and I'm always wondering what to do. And I always want to ride my bike or ride my scooter or something. And there's not really a place to do that in my neighborhood. It's just a street. And sometimes I'm, sometimes I can ride my bike at the church across the street, but other than that, there's not really a place to do it. So a skate park would be really nice to be able to get my energy out after school and that stuff. So yeah, I'm just hoping that we could have a skate park in Bothell.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment? I have no more signup sheets up here. Seeing none, we'll move into our first study session, which is AB 17-077 on the Wayne Golf Course acquisition process. And I believe we have, who doesn't link, Director Keats.
Who do I find this? Oh.
Thank you, Mayor, council. A brief PowerPoint tonight for you, so with that, I'll just jump right in. Just a little refresher for everybody. This was the site plan that was, came up when the, when we did our visioning work. And as you can see, has the two activity zones, some trails meandering through the property, restoration areas, of course, the river and what have you. And this again was a byproduct of our visioning work that was done last spring. So just a refresher there. Study session topics tonight. We'll just give an update on what is known about security and pending grant applications. Have an application scenario to present. Have one example of an active recreation plan for the back nine, and then an introduction of an acquisition schedule and some possible project financing options. So the grants update, total acquisition costs estimated for the front and back nine, as you see, is $11 million, $366,000. We have secured grant funding for the front nine now at $875,000. We have secured grant funding for the back nine at $4 million, $100,000. So just under $5 million secured grant funding. And we have two pending applications totaling $2 million in the capital budget that are, of course, just awaiting the legislature to take action on the operating and capital budget. So we're cautiously optimistic about the two grant sources there for another $2 million. So acquisition scenario number one, we would reserve up to four acres, activity zones for flexibility on both the front nine and the back nine. The remaining 32.38 acres covered in the, with the King County Conservation Easement on the back nine. The estimated cost for the city of Bothell ranges anywhere from, for the acquisition, from $4.385 million to $6.385 million. And again, that's based on the outcome of the two possible pending state grant opportunities. At one point, we also had looked at another acquisition scenario, which we're calling number two, that was brought forth back in January when we had our last study session. And this particular scenario would have preserved the entire back nine and the conservation easement, the entire 36 acres. So the entire back nine would have been covered by an easement. This scenario really is no longer viable because of requirement for application of 2018, 2018 and 2019 grant funding to actually get the appropriate level of funding to implement this scenario. So it's, it's not really a viable option anymore. And the funding timeframe also due to the grants would have, would exceed Forterra's loan repayment date and the three-year window for repayment. So this here, just putting it up just for illustrative purposes only, not to suggest that we would put a multi-use sports field on the back nine, but in past study sessions, it has been raised as a possibility. This is just shown on how it potentially could lay out. The, this particular site plan encompasses about 4.4 acres. So it's just a little bit under a half acre, larger than the four acre activity area that's proposed. But it does show you how, how a possible active recreation amenity could be cited on the back nine. So for an acquisition plan, if council chooses to move forward with the property acquisition, the recommendation is to develop aggressive acquisition plan that includes drafting a purchase and sale agreement, investigate potential for a short-term golf course operator after the city would take operation of the golf course, will continue to assess the purchase of maintenance equipment and a maintenance and operations plan, and possibly initiate the issuance of councilmatic bonds for, and a transition plan. So the funding available for the acquisition right now, in our unallocated park funding account, there, we have a total of $3.7 million. Staff recommendation is to issue 20-year councilmatic bonds to finance the city share of the purchase cost, retaining the 3.7 unallocated parks funding, use park impact fees to make the bond payments, and finance did the math. And the $6 million debt requires an annual debt payment of approximately $480,000. So that's $80,000 for every $1 million in debt incurred. And in 2016, the city received $500,000 of park impact fees, which would cover the estimated annual debt. So, and then another caveat, real estate excise tax receipts would need to subsidize any future potential shortage of park impact fees if for any reason the park impact fees came under the amount to cover the debt payment. So for tonight, we just want to reaffirm the direction, which acquisition scenario to pursue, direction to proceed with the acquisition of the Wayne Golf Course utilizing the recommended schedule, and direction regarding the recommended financial, excuse me, strategy. And that concludes my report, and I'll go back to the table. Any questions and discussion?
Thank you, Director Keats. Is there any questions? And we do have Forterra here as well. Welcome.
On page nine of our agenda packet, we have a detail of this unallocated $3.7 million park funding. So could we have someone go over that in detail? And I'm, and I have a couple of questions. When we say $3.7 million, that means we have cash in the bank right now for that. Is that what that means? And then the first line says excess real, the REIT dollars is $1.6 million. What is that excess from? Is that the quarter percent that we allocate to parks? There's a Main Street enhancement construction with, it looks like a negative $400,000. What is that? When it says general opportunity reserve, is that parks only reserve, or is that our reserve fund for the entire operating fund? And are, aren't we concerned about the status of our reserves? And then what are, what's, what's the next entry, residual local infrastructure development guarantee funds reserve, and the citywide park impact fee reserve? It sounds like we collected $500,000 yet last year, and that should be, I guess that was added on to $400,000 we already had, we already had in the bank somehow. So if we could have staff talk about what that $3.7
Hello, my name is Gretchen, and I'm a financial analyst in financial department. So to answer your first question about the excess real estate and excise tax dollars, at the time, we put together the CFP, the Capital Facilities Plan, we anticipated to bring in $3 million per year. In year 2015, we brought in $4 million. I'm sorry. The total of year 2015 and 16, we anticipated to bring in $6 million. But we actually brought in $7.6 million of actual real estate excise tax receipts. Your second question in regards to general opportunity funds, that $1.42 million is for the whole plan, including parks, debt, transportation projects, and operating, capital operating program that you don't see in the plan, but you see it in the budget, the capital budget. And your third question in regard to the LID, is the bond from 1995, we got for $4.2 million is for streets and parkland acquisition. And the $568,000 is money that we didn't spend, and it was just like a surplus. So we kept it in the park reserve fund for future
And what is the, the $400,000 entry for the Main Street enhancement construction?
Right. In March, on March 7th, Public Works came to you guys and asked for you to approve their construction contract for their Main Street construction, and their lowest bid was actually $400,000 more than what Public Works staff estimated. So they asked council to use unallocated real estate excise tax, unallocated monies for that. And that's why I, we, Public Works reduced the $400,000 from the excise, real estate excise dollars.
Okay, so that's why it appears here. It's not that Main Street enhancement construction is a park funding per se. It's, it's, it's an allocation from REIT?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so if I understand the plan, it's not to use this $3.7 million, it's to borrow money and use future park impact fee revenues to pay for that bonded debt?
That's correct. That's the finance department's and mine recommendation.
And so, do we have, are we, do we have a firm prediction that our park impact fees will continue to be $500,000 for the next 20 years?
We don't, that's an estimate to the best of finance's ability. And if it doesn't come in, then it would have to be backfilled by other sources.
So if we were to take this approach by using essentially all of the park impact fees we collect every year to pay off this debt, it's like a de facto policy that says for the park impact fees that are collected throughout the entire city, we're going to direct all of that towards the acquisition of the golf course?
Unless the park impact fees increase over the 20 years, the excess would then go back to other park acquisition. And that's one of the reasons we're recommending to keep the monies that we have, the 3.7, to be able to utilize them for other park and open space, open space acquisition that's currently being considered by the council. We could, we could utilize those funds for those opportunities rather than clean out this account and then bond for the remaining amount. And then there's no monies available for future acquisition.
So we haven't really had any discussions here yet about spending that $3.7 million on other park projects. So are we talking about spending that, you know, this year and moving quickly on that? It seems like we've been sitting on these monies for a while.
Well, one example would be Shelton View. We just received a million dollar grant that the city and the community applied for together to purchase the Shelton View property and, and preserve that forest. And so that would be one of the opportunities that we need to find matching funds to be able to do that.
And do we have that on an upcoming projected agenda item?
Not at this time, but it will be coming.
Okay. And then, so if we don't meet $500,000 per year in park impact fees, it has to be backfilled with REIT. And so what else do we use our REIT revenue to pay off in the city? I mean, we pay, we pay other debt with that REIT revenue. So are we, and I thought that a lot, I thought the significant portion of that REIT revenue was already spoken for. And so now we're talking about potentially adding another drain to REIT revenue.
I don't know. Gretchen, do you know what it's used for each year?
At the moment, I'm going to have to answer that question when I go back to my desk.
Okay. All right. And then, we have an example of a ball field, or multi, multipurpose sports field. But what I heard you say is that's conceptual. It's not, it's, do you feel like that's a direction that council has, has preliminarily taken to, to move in that direction?
No, we just put the site plan in there just purely for illustrative purposes only. Well, I think the key thing is the, keeping the flexibility and being able to look at a variety of different options for, for that, if that's the way we go.
And so you have a, the, the table before this is a concept plan level estimate of the project costs for this ball field at $4.5 million. That is above and beyond acquisition. Is that correct? Let's see here. Do you have a, a general sense, are MNO costs great, greater or less than over time for a ball field in a parking lot versus like an open field in a nature preserve?
I think you'd have higher O and M costs for a ball field.
And then it also, let's see. So now we're talking about bringing on a short-term golf course operator. And in the agenda packet, it says this option provides the city with some revenue, but we're still trying to work to understand the costs. When, when will we have that information? I'm, I'm concerned that we've, we've received information that municipal golf courses are money-losing ventures. And as much as I would like to continue having a golf course in, in its, you know, in existence there, I'm not supportive of taking on a money-losing venture.
Well, so keep in mind that it's short-term. So the, the understanding with Forterra is this is not to be used as a golf, a golf course long-term. So that's what we put in short-term. And it, and if there's an opportunity to have some revenue coming in, it makes sense for the city to look for an operator to, because otherwise, if we just purchase it and then we have no golf course, we still have to maintain it because they're invasives. We can't just let it grow wild. And so there'll be costs for maintenance. So why not hire someone, whether it's an operator, whether it's us, someone to generate the revenue and continue to operate it as a golf course, so there's some revenue to offset the cost of maintaining it while we go through the planning phase? That made sense to us.
So that would just kind of be additional revenue that we hadn't even accounted for?
Exactly. They're getting revenue now, and so we want to capture that same revenue in the short term.
And then, so you mentioned that, you know, in, in our packet, we have two scenarios, but really, we just have one scenario. We have one option. And you, and you said that the back nine, you know, we decided not to move forward with this idea of it all being in a conservation easement. But when I look at the table on page seven, the cost of the back nine, that's $8 million regardless of whether it's got a ball field on it, regardless of whether it's converts back to nature, it's $8 million.
That's correct.
So, so if we were, I mean, is King County, is King County willing to purchase that, that conservation easement from Forterra, thereby reducing our exposure to that $8 million? I mean, I, I understand having flexibility for active zones, but that's probably the most expensive way to pay for active recreation in the city. So is there an opportunity for King County to buy back a portion of that or all of that? So is there an opportunity for King County to buy back a portion of that or all of that as conservation easement?
So under, under council direction, we were asked to, to seek out grants that supported active use on the front nine and the back nine. And so that's what we said in the staff report. Option two is basically we've missed the window. We didn't apply for grants for passive use on the back nine. And the next set of grants, really the most feasible grants for that would happen in the, in 1819 or 1920, and it's too late. The, we have a time limit with Forterra. They're only holding the property for three years and we need to make a decision. King County's provided us with multiple millions of dollars in grants. We've asked, we have two grants requests outstanding with the state. And so this is really, this has been initiated by the city. King County's been a great partner, but, but this is, the cost of the back nine is $8 million.
And I, I think now that we're getting some more information, the idea of how to finance this with a 20-year debt that's funded by 100% of citywide park impact fees. I think now that we're getting a little bit more information, my, my interest and my direction is, is changing because it costs us a lot of money to put active use here where we could use that money more efficiently and more effectively elsewhere in the city.
But if we use it, keep in mind, if we use it for passive, if we just decide we don't want active use on the back nine and you're just going to do passive use, the, the purchase price is still the same.
It's still the same.
Right.
So that brings me to the active use on the front nine. So the, the estimated cost of the front nine is $3.4 million. And the majority of that is tied up in the four acres that are not in the conservation easement.
Correct.
If we, if the city did not purchase those four acres of the conserva, of the, that, outside that conservation easement, we would basically have the money and secure grant funding today to cover the cost of the remaining property because it's, it's decreased in value because it has conservation easement on it. So if we decided not to pursue, if we didn't, if we told Forterra, we simply can't afford to buy those four acres of the front nine, you know, we, we would purchase the 30, the 32 acres and then Forterra could sell the four active acres on the front nine for whatever use that speaks to their mission, whether it's conservation, conservation or affordable housing. That could reduce our, our input and our need to, to borrow money by about two and a half million dollars, thereby focusing our ability to purchase the back nine and then all of the remaining front nine that's currently under conservation easement. I mean, it could be a win-win where we are preserving 85 acres and taking a fiscally sustainable approach where we can use our limited city dollars elsewhere in the city to get active use.
Well, and so one of the ideas on the front nine, the, the four acres on the front nine is to have some sort of economic engine on that front nine, whether that's some sort of golf activity, whether that's a restaurant, whether that's, that's something that generates revenue that then could also assist the city in, in, in caring for these acre, these, these two parcels that, that we purchase.
And that economic engine could happen under private ownership. Doesn't have to have, have to happen under city ownership.
But then there's no revenue for the city.
Sales tax, property tax, you know, one-time construction tax. And we, we don't know, I mean, we know it costs two and a half million dollars that we have heard tonight that we have other issues for, I mean, other needs, skate park, Shelton View Forest, that property that we have set in our PROSAP for a North Bothell acquisition. We have lots of other needs. And so I guess I would, I would propose to council that we consider an additional scenario because I'm not ready to endorse what we have before us. And I've thought about other options that, that save us money and allow us to address park needs throughout the entire city, not just dedicating the majority of our funds to the golf course acquisition. And in terms of a, of a multipurpose field, I can't think of a more expensive and environmentally insensitive use to put there with a ball field and an 85-acre parking lot. Because we have, we could do that so much more cost-effectively by turfing North Creek Field 3 that already has parking associated with it. We could improve fields with the North Shore School District through an inter-local agreement that already has parking associated with it. So I appreciate you costing out what, what a field would take there. And I think for that reason, that is certainly not an option that we should pursue. And right now I'll, I'll, I'll yield the floor.
If I can make one point of clarification with regards to an option for Forterra, it's been made very, very clear to me that Forterra has a very specific mission of conservation for, for these parcels. And they, they're investors who came forward and invested to make sure that this, that Forterra could purchase the property and giving the city the option to purchase it. They have no interest, nor does their, their organizational mission have any interest in doing any kind of development of any sort and selling it for any kind of profit to any public or private agency to do development.
They've added affordable housing to the organizational mission. And, and affordable housing would be terrific because it, wouldn't it be nice for people of all income levels to be able to enjoy that property?
I'm, what I'm telling you is what I've been specifically told.
Well, and we, if, if we don't have the money, I mean, if we're going to put all our eggs in this one basket and, and, and put all 20 years of future revenue into this, then I guess that's a, that's a policy decision that the council will make. And I'm, I'm, I'm arguing against that. I'm arguing for an option where we preserve 85 acres and address our number one council goal, which is fiscal sustainability. Because I'm concerned that when our park impact fee revenues do not exceed our 20-year annual lease payment, and then we have to backfill it with REIT dollars, we're using those REIT dollars on lots of other things, including the $3.3 million lease payment for this prop, for what the building that we're in right now. So I'll end with that.
Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, deputy mayor.
I wanted to ask regarding the park impact fees, at what point in, during the year did they switch over to the new park impact fees? And so I'm trying to gauge how much was made on, under the old impact fees and how much was made under the new impact fees last year? Do we know?
I'm just going by memory here. My memory's not what it used to be. So I, I think the changeover was sometime last fall, well, I think it was October, maybe November. So somewhere, somewhere in that timeframe.
So really, we're talk, we're, this 500, how much did we make? 500,000 from last year was really under the old impact fee schedule for the majority of the year?
No, this, this estimate is based on the new impact fees.
Oh, it is.
And it's been calculated by finance.
Okay. But I would suppose if we had a similar year in 2017, 18 compared to last year, the park impact fees would not be 500,000. They would be three times that, just given the increase in the park. And, and I understand that won't be the case for 20 years, but for the next couple of years, if all things being equal, it would be quite a bit higher if the economy held out.
My understanding is the estimate of $500,000 a year is based on the increase in park impact fees on the new calculation.
It is.
That's my understanding.
That's what I'm getting at. It sounded like it was an actual number for last year. And so my, my thought is if the majority of the year
Okay.
was from last
Got it.
right, the old park impact fees, and we increased those park impact fees. Now, I don't know in terms of the 500,000 a year estimate for 20 years.
So we're, just real quick, deputy mayor, Bird estimated 900,000 for citywide park impact fee. Oh, that's the reserve?
No, that's a reserve.
What's it per year?
Five, 500,000 is what was estimated. So if it's, if it's based on actuals, then your assumption could be correct. I, I understood it to be an estimate for the coming years, but if it's based on actuals, then yes, the number could be more.
I could see that being maybe the average, but I'm just assuming the next couple of years it would be quite a bit higher.
That could be, yes.
Anyway, it would be interesting if we look, could look into that because maybe that would change how much we could pay off upfront or I, however. Because my next question and thought was if what I saw is correct, for every million dollars we borrow in consumatic bonds, the cost to us is $80,000. So if we were to take even a million of that 3.7 million, that's a savings of $80,000.
That's correct.
And so I guess in my mind, if we're going to do consumatic bonds, I'd like to split, I guess, split it a little bit and maybe we do consumatic bonds for Shelton View further in the future versus, if that makes sense, borrowing money now versus borrowing money later. I don't know i- if the recommendation is because of, of what the interest rates are right now or how that works, but it's just a thought. And then I wanted to ask regarding the unfunded park capital projects. This is kind, a little bit off topic, but it really struck me, this, this list of adding up to $46 million. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because I'm on the capital facilities plan. And we talked about all these things, but never in the process of eight hours did we get to the point where we talked about what the process is to decide what the priorities are and, and ways to simplify and, and make things cost less. We've talked about a park bond in the future. And my thought is rather than saying, we want to do all these things, say, this is what we think are the priorities. This is what we think the park bond ought to be and, and how do we get to that number? That's how I do it at home when I do my budget. So I look at, for instance, the Park of Bothell Landing and I, I just don't see why we need to spend $16 million. Because most of what people love about the Park of Bothell Landing is it's simple. It's calm, it's soothing, it's not Disneyland. And as far as my memory goes with the master plan, it looked like Disneyland. So that's just kind of a thought going forward. You already brought up opportunities for leasing. I, I, now that we know Red Hook is moving, I think that could be a huge opportunity for a brewery or something on that land. And also I know Kenmore's pursuing a, establishing themselves as a brewing and beer community. And I think we should partner with them. The other question I had was, once we buy the land, does that prevent us from pursuing active grants? I think that's what you said is the window for doing it prior to purchase is closed, but that doesn't prevent us from doing it going forward after we buy it, does it?
Well, it, it doesn't, but your, your applications become far less desirable and, and viable. So once you've purchased it, organizations that are giving grants are really trying to help cities or organizations accomplish something. And basically if you've done it and you're just trying to pay yourself back because you didn't want to spend that much, you're really not a competitive grant.
Okay. So the other thought I had was when council member Valducci was here, she talked about money for sports. And, and I, my understanding of this process is Director Keats gave us a plan of a sports field. That's not currently the plan. It was just an option. We're not even, we're not voting on it. It's not, it's not like we're adding that to the tally. And so I guess my thought is, I think there are opportunities later when we decide what we want to do to look for money to help us in that endeavor.
So we put that in there because we wanted, not everyone has a conception of what four acres can do.
Right, right.
And so it was more, it's not 10 ball fields. Four acres gets eaten up really fast when you have a parking lot and you need the, the sports field. And so that's all we wanted to do was to show you the general size. And there's lots of opportunities. There's public-private partnerships, there's sponsorships. And, and we just wanted to show you again, just a price tag, just a general, what it would cost a government agency to build a field. Again, there's absolutely no council direction to do that. We just thought it would be helpful as part of the discussion.
No, it's very helpful. And I, and I think we all recognize and understand, most of us have kids. There's a, a dearth of sports fields. And so we, that's something that I think is a priority for our community. The last thing I'll say regarding the front nine is I, I believe the reason this whole thing started was on those four acres on the front nine. And so to go back and talk about allowing development, I think is missing the entire point of this entire Wayne Golf Course purchase. If we don't, if we don't buy it, we've just, I, I don't know what we've been doing for the past two years. And so I can't emphasize enough, I, I understand concerns about fiscal responsibility, but I also know that there are ways we can be creative to solve the problem. And I, I, I can't emphasize enough, the reason that Wayne Golf Course became an issue was because it was going to be developed. And we can't forget that that's where this all started.
Who'd like to go next? Anybody over here? Nope. Councilmember Green.
Did, the last time we discussed this, or last time I was here to be able to discuss it, I asked the question about loan assumption, meaning taking over the loan from Forterra so we don't have to come up with this big capital payment upfront, but we assume a loan. Is that a possibility? That's been discussed.
They have, we haven't discussed, discussed it specifically, but the investors, my understanding is it's a three-year loan from the investors. And there's been no discussion about us assuming that loan. That's not anything that Forterra's offered, nor have they indicated that that's an option for us.
Okay. So assuming loan terms nowadays, I mean, you can get loans 75% LTV, loan to value. And I know they've had appraisals on these properties. But you can, most likely, I don't know if you're at a 60% loan to value, so potentially the investors came in at a 40% equity. So the investors need to be paid off. But the bank maybe would be willing to do a three, five or so extension. Banks are in the bank of, or in the business of lending and receiving interest. They might be really interested to stay there. And so that would require far less capital for us as a city. We could just pay out the investors are saying, give us our money now. So I'd love to see that, that is pursued. I don't know, it looks like you're maybe wanting to answer the question or?
Hi, my name's Hillary Wilson and I work for Forterra. And we simply, there were 11 guarantors that put up, they did not give us their money, but they put up funding or support for that loan and we undertook that loan. And it's my understanding that we're going to stick with the dates that we have talked to the city previously.
So what I'm hearing there, I appreciate that. They put their guarantee behind the loan, so it sounds like it was maybe near 100% LTV type loan, or Forterra put in the additional equity that was required of a million, two million, or whatever it was. That's an avenue that I think we should still ask the question and sit down if you're willing to have that discussion. That would take a huge burden off the citizens right now. And maybe then over time, there'd be payments then to the bank as grants came in in 2019 and 2020, then we could pay down, down that debt further. It sounds like we have $4.7 million today, which is a compelling number to be able to pay Forterra and the bank down substantially and then just carry the balance for an extended period on the loan. That would be my suggestion and my request for that conversation to take place. So as far as the activity areas on the site, I love the, the idea of a, a football field, a soccer field, whatever it might be, a multi-use field that all these different sports can be able to use it. There is a shortage, as all of us in this room would agree. And then on the front nine, the, the parking lot area, I mean, back in the day, Mike McMenham had expressed interest in having a restaurant there and facilitating a small golf course. He never had interest in 18, was interested in potentially in the front nine. So maybe there's an opportunity that he's our short-term user or maybe a, short-term is maybe 20 years. I don't know. But they've had a far greater success than they ever dreamed of here in our city. So I know that they like Bothell, they enjoy the community that comes and supports them daily. It's crazy down there. I've seen all of you there. So it's a fun place. So, I mean, I love the idea. I think one of the big concerns initially on the front nine was that there was a request for an upzone to go from what would be, I think, four, nine lots or whatever. I think the request to go up to 45 or something to that extent. I'm trying to go by memory. So maybe it's the upzone that was the bigger concern than really even having that developed because there's already a restaurant there. So if there's another better, greater restaurant, maybe that would be Because there's already a restaurant there. So if there's another better, greater restaurant, maybe that would be something that would be welcomed by the community. So, cool. Thanks for the thoughts and time. Appreciate your work in this.
Councilmember Spadey.
Great, thank you. And I agree with what Councilmember Free said about McMenamins. We, I've casually had that conversation. They would love to be able to partner with the city and do like an executive par three, nine-hole par three. I, I, I think that having that small golf course element maintains a his, uh, part of the history of Bothell. I mean, that there's been a golf course in Bothell for over eighty years. So I, I think we gotta be aware of our history and preserve it mu- as much of it as we can. So I think there's definitely possibilities there. I under- um, stand Councilmember Sandberg's uh, concerns and her, and I appreciate her ideas about partnering with the city and, and turfing Field Three. But that doesn't, those things don't do anything for capacity, uh, as was mentioned earlier. We, we have a shortage. And so having the back nine active use space increases capacity, year-round capacity with the synthetic field. And that, and that's important for our community to have that increased capacity. We've also, uh, we've made a commitment to many other parks, projects before this came about and to our community on these projects. Uh, and I, on page nine where it shows a list of unfunded projects, if you take Wayne out of the equation, you take um, Shelton View Woods out, the Aquatic Center and uh, right above uh, Park at Bothell Landing, open space acquisition and development. You take those things out. There's thirty, roughly thirty-one point three million dollars worth of projects that we've committed to. And we're not moving forward on. The first Lieutenant Nicholas Madroso Memorial Park. I, uh, to me, that should be one of the first things we get done. Uh, we, we've had some very passionate uh, testimony regarding that park in the past. And I, I, I think we need to follow through on that one. So, but uh, there's, there's projects here that we need to also come up and fund and get moving on. And I, I just can't, as I thought somebody here earlier said, put all of our eggs in one basket. And I can't support a councilmatic bond. If we're gonna go, if we're gonna bond something, I want to bond it so we can do some other projects and I want the citizens to say whether they want it done or not. I don't want the council to do it. It's um, if it's important to the public, they'll support it. And I think we just have to put it out there for them. But we also have to have a, you know, a good way to, uh, you know, I, I think putting it out there as a, as a levy type bond where it's a bump in, in the taxes, then uh, we're not relying on those funds and the economy to dictate whether we make that payment or not. If it's important, they'll support it. And that, that's, that's my, would be my direction, is that we float a, a levy or a bond where we got, have a little bump to pay for. I, I just don't think a councilmatic and relying on REIT and, and parks mitigation to pay for it. That's just not the way to go about it, I, I don't think. So. I know I'm a little all over the board there, but I think we gotta look at our other projects too, not just this one.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, as far as the councilmatic bond goes, I'm not real thrilled about that idea at all. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Sandberg that I uh, I think the field on the back nine probably isn't the best idea either. Have we talked to anybody uh, about maintaining the course as a course? If I, I'm not mistaken, in September, uh, they're gonna shut it down. So have we talked to the people that are running it right now? And, and they're willing to do a short-term? Oh, they're not?
Excuse me. We've had just some initial phone calls with some other operators that could backfill after September. If, if the case came to that. So it wouldn't be the current operator, we'd have to, probably have to do a short-term RFQ for a short-term operator to, to operate for a sp- unknown specified amount of time.
You know, I'd, I'd love to have McMenamins pick it up and just have that be uh, a little front nine, a short, a short nine-hole front nine, executive courses, they call them nowadays. Uh, I agree with the history of having Wayne here forever. But Wayne also has a troubled history uh, in our community. So uh, it's gonna be interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. So we started on this journey thirty years ago to acquire this land and keep it in perpetuity for our community. And over the past couple of years, I've had the honor of serving on the committee for the city, working within the community with nonprofit organizations, working with many citizens in our community to try to save the Wayne Golf Course in perpetuity for our community. That includes working with King County, Forterra, the state of Washington, and many others who have put endless amount of hours and time into making this happen for us. This is not something that's just for our city. This is something that's regional. So I, I would ask everybody who's sitting here, who's making the decision to think long and hard about where we have been and where we want to go with this. Because this is something that people are taking a long look at us. And what we do, at the end of the day, they're gonna take notice. So the first thing I want to do is I want to thank everybody who's been working so hard on this, um, to make it happen for us and, and our community. I've heard a lot about the cost um, of acquiring the land. I think we need to maybe hear a little bit more about how to maintain the land. And what type of economic drivers we have available to us. Because some of the things that I've heard um, about money losing in golf courses, I've also heard that some municipal golf courses have been turned around to actually be profitable for cities. And ultimately, that, that may not be the end use for the land. But it gives us an ability to take it a little bit further to find out what that final use will be. Um, I've heard Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Doerr talk about Red Hook and other entities. I've heard Councilmember Free talk about McMenamins. That to me sounds like partnerships, additional partnerships that will help to save this land. That could be an economic driver to pay for the land. We talk about park impact fees. Wow, twenty years it took us to raise our park impact fees. Twenty years ago, if we would have raised those park impact fees, we might have had the money to buy this land today. But today we have to make a hard decision. We have to make a tough decision. We have to make a decision based on not us today, but the future of our community and what we're trying to do. We are impacting the future generations. We talk about a ball field on the back nine. You know, uh, do I want a ball field in my backyard? No. But if it's in the best interest of my community, if it's gonna serve my community, then I'm for it. Because that's what we're here to do, is make decisions based on our community and hopefully make the right decision. Do I think a ball field can make money? Absolutely. Every group I work with, I coach three different sports right now, and all the sports, individual nonprofit organizations pay for sports fields. That is an economic driver. Can that help us? Yes, it can absolutely help us. How does that look at the end of the day? I don't know. But the bottom line is I think that we have an opportunity here with all of the different conversations, all of the different partners. We have King County, we have Forterra. They've offered to stay and help. One of the other things that we talk about is after uh, we acquire the land, is there other grant opportunities? Absolutely. There's restoration opportunities. How wonderful would it be to do an environmental restoration project on the back nine that could bring in millions of dollars? That is a huge economic driver for us, huge tax incentive for us. So we have the ability to not just look at this as a front and back nine, four acres on the front, four acres on the back. Do we do it as active? Do we do it as pass? This fundamentally, hands down, is one of the biggest projects in our region. And we have the ability to be a part of that. And so, so for me, I, I'm in support of making sure that we do what is necessary to honor what we started two years, thirty years ago, but two years ago with Forterra and King County and get this land closed. Find an economic driver to help pay for this land, so it doesn't fall on the backs of the citizens, but give the citizens something in perpetuity forever. So I'm in very supportive of making sure that we move this thing forward. And I'm in supportive of making sure that it happens quickly. Within the timeframe that Forterra and King County needed to happen. Thank you.
I have to follow that one up. That was good. So what is the current zoning on the front nine? Is it ninety-six hundred? So if we, I, one of the ideas that was brought up was, you know, Forterra, you just sell it. And so what we would get is a bunch of quarter-acre lot, single-family residential homes on that four acres, because that's what it's zoned for, unless we change the zoning. And then it was brought up, but I think that's a really important point, that we, we do need to understand what our current annual uh, spark impact fees are with the new rate. Just if you could email it to us as soon as you have it. So we kind of have that, that figure if it's not the five hundred thousand a year. I, I am in full support, like Jim, Councilmember McNeil said, um, we need, we need to get this done. We need to purchase this land. If it's councilmatic bonds, so be it. I think we have huge opportunities ahead of us if, and I'm not looking at it as, oh, well, we're gonna have to pay half a million dollars per year for the next twenty years. There's gonna be huge opportunities here to have public-private partnerships. There's gonna be opportunity maybe for a ball field that we rent out. But the front nine, to me, it seems like it's the perfect scenario for a public-private partnership. Uh, we can activate this land. I, I, at first, there were some people that were interested in just making this all, all conservation. Just keep it in perpetuity and conservation. And personally, and I think uh, I, I think the council, where we were at, was that we wanted to keep our options open. We wanted to make sure, you know, twenty years from now, we look back and say, oh, boy, I wish we had some space for a ball field. And we're looking at this, you know, huge amount of acreage. It's all locked up in conservation because we weren't uh, thinking forward uh, from now. And um, I, I agree with Councilmember McNeil, it's, it's time. We, we've done everything we can in partnership with one Bothell, King County, and Forterra to acquire the money we could get for preservation. And I think they held up their end of the deal. And uh, we did give direction as a council that we wanted to try to reserve those options in the future for the, for the four acres on the front and the back nine. And they've held up their part of the deal. And I think that we have an obligation to do our part. And our obligation is to purchase the properties. Yes, initially, that's gonna be a debt service on a capital uh, bond for twenty years. But I don't, I don't see it that way at all. I see that this could actually be more of a revenue-producing um, effort for the city. By my vision, and when I've, when this became an opportunity that we could actually, this could happen, where we could preserve the Wayne Golf Course. And if you look at it from, you know, thirty thousand foot level, you have Blythe Park, the Wayne Golf Course, you have Bothell Landing, and then you have this big downtown redevelopment. And to me, that is the whole picture. Where you have a place where there's a lot of people living in apartments and townhomes that don't have any property. Right, walking distance away, there's a huge regional park system for people to enjoy. I think it'll attract people to our city. I think it'll be an attractive addition to the downtown revitalization. I've seen us spend a lot more money on other things that, quite frankly, I don't think would have the draw that this would. And we did it without a flinch. And so to me, I think it's time. I think we need to move forward with this. If it's not a councilmatic bond, it's some other financing. I trust the finance director to put us in the right direction on that for the options that are in front of us. And we get it done. So that's my position. Do you guys have enough traction? Sure, I just one quick question. Lieutenant Madrazo Park, is that fully funded? I thought it was.
I'm glad you asked about that. Actually, we're going through the bid, bid documents right now. And we should have that out to bid for the first phase construction within a month.
And so it is funded?
Yeah, so it is funded. Thank you.
So is everybody okay with the second round? I don't know what it was scheduled for. Do you? So I'm okay for a second round. Is everybody else okay for a second round? Okay.
I have to leave in about fifteen minutes, just so you know. Okay, spring concert.
Councilmember Chamber.
Well, since I, I had to go first, um, I'd like to address some of the points that were brought up. I also think it's important, before we move forward in affirming a direction, that we understand what those park impact fees are. So when you say request a direction from council, reaffirm the direction on which acquisition scenario to pursue. We're only given one acquisition, acquisition, acquisition scenario. And I think we need more information. I, I don't support putting Shelton View kind of on the back burner, you know, borrow, borrowing money if needed for them in the future, because I don't want, we have an opportunity with Shelton View Forest to purchase property when it is uh, less expensive. And we have the opportunity to not repeat the mistake we made with the Wayne Golf Course. When the property was available to the city to buy, we chose not to. And then because we didn't, we've gone along this much more expensive path. And I don't want to repeat that same mistake with Shelton View Forest. And so I think we should be moving on that um, immediately. In fact, ahead of uh, the Wayne Golf Course. We should be leveraging that million-dollar Snoamish County Conservation Future money uh, now to do, to do that acquisition. The conversation about the golf course actually started with a concern over the back nine and an upzone of that four-acre parcel and front nine. But everybody knows that that front nine, front nine, four-acre parcel, not in the conservation easement, has always been our ninety-six hundred and always has a development potential. And development on that property would be no different than development on the east side of the street. You know, it, it, so um, I think when we talk about scenarios to consider, I think we should be considering this option of a loan assumption where, uh, what Councilmember Free brought up, where we have less upfront capital, and it gives us the opportunity to apply for funds in the twenty eighteen, nineteen grant cycle and, and beyond. I think we should be pursuing that. So I would support pursuing that um, as a scenario. I also, I, I did not hear any support for, for not pursue, for yeah, to, for not buying, you know, spending two and a half million for the four acres of the front nine. Um, I wish we would consider that as a scenario. But barring that, I, I hear a little bit more support for this loan assumption option. Turfing other fields that we have in existence in the city and doing field upgrades with the North Shore School District does increase capacity. So right now, Field Three isn't usable for a majority of the year because it's so wet, but turfing it would. And if we did the same kind of uh, upgrades with the North Shore School District, I think that would increase capacity. Um, I believe in economic drivers as well. But I don't think the city has to be the property owner to engage in economic, economic driving. We need, the city needs to get out of the business of owning the property because it sets up a conflict of interest when we, when we try to sell. And we've seen that a lot in, in um, in selling property in the downtown where, I mean, we, we need to not be in the business of owning property that in turn can be an economic driver. And I can spend more time on that, but I, that's just a, a philosophy of mine. And I hear about all these huge opportunities to produce all this revenue. And till I see that, what's in front of me is the hard money that we're being asked to borrow for twenty years. So I don't feel comfortable borrowing money when we could reduce that, we could reduce that impact with the promise of, of opportunities and future revenues. Because that, I don't see that. I see the possibility, but I don't see the money in the bank. And so um, in terms of those questions, which acquisition scenario? I think we have, we have other opportunities here that we've already been discussed. And I'm really concerned about the recommended financing strategy.
Would anybody else like to take a second opportunity? Councilmember Freed, you're gonna leave him? Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I just had a question because I was under the impression that any golf use for this property on the front nine, first of all, we have to get permission, given the grants that we've received, and it would have to be a very limited time period with a plan. Am I correct within that?
Is that true for the front nine too? Is it limited on the front nine or the back nine? For sure.
So, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Both. So, very limited.
Right, okay. Because we keep talking about how we're gonna make it a golf course. We can't make it a golf course. That's just a temporary till we figure out what we're doing.
That's correct. It's not a long-term use.
Okay. I guess that's all I have right now.
I need you to wanna go?
I'll go next. Thank you. So it is my understanding that through the grant process, that it is a golf course now. The futures money that's been brought in, it's been run as a golf course. It can stay as a golf course. Is that not correct?
So, this is in agreement with King County that it can be run as such, but some of the other grants that are going to be used by the fee, so the underlying property, come with restrictions. And there is the opportunity to potentially talk with some of those grant funding agencies for an intermediate period, but that's not guaranteed. And it's because of the restrictions that come with the monies.
So we would need to figure that out ahead of time. If we took those grants, then that would hinder us from continuing to operate it as a golf course?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, it's my understanding that if we don't, if we continue to finance through Forterra for an additional year, I think till, is it till twenty-nineteen? That it will cost us an additional six hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus.
That's correct.
Correct? So, potentially to be fiscally responsible, we should probably figure out a way to save that six hundred thousand dollars and not put it towards interest. However, I would ask the question Councilmember Sandberg, and I believe Councilmember Freed brought up, is the funding opportunity through the loan that is already in place, what would, if we were to just assume that loan, per se, what would the rate of interest be on that loan versus what we could get? Because I understand we have a pretty good credit rating. So, we probably could get a better loan, better rate, I guess you would call it, through city financing. Is that something we've looked at, or...?
I mean, if you consider the fact that it's six hundred thousand dollars for the year for interest, and we're looking at four eighty, one could deduce that it's cheaper to float the bonds, and we get a better interest rate. The capital is the same, and so we'll have, we'll buy down with all the monies we have through the grants. We'll buy that down. And so whether it's a loan or the bond issuance, the capital upfront is identical. It's the gap funding that we would need to borrow. And so whether that's working with Forterra and certainly asking the question, I'm more than happy to do that, to see if there's an opportunity to assume that loan or to go out and do bond financing.
But it would make sense to do whichever one is lower, correct?
Of course, yes.
One of the things that I didn't speak about earlier that I probably should have is the education opportunity. Huge education opportunity for a partnership, potentially with maybe the University of Washington or Cascadia College, who are already in our community. And maybe they might be willing to partner with us on the front nine and do, you know, something that's an economic driver, or something on the back nine. We talk about a sports field, but maybe they want to do an education center that could potentially be an economic driver or partner with us to help mitigate some of those costs. So I wanted to bring that up. When we talk about partnerships with sports fields, obviously you can tell they're near and dear to me. But I'm gonna give you an example of a partnership with King County that happened really close to us on Finn Hills called Big Finn. It's a partnership where a personal person, a gentleman by the name of Steve Lidle, came and invested three million dollars of his own personal money into building a field, a turf field, for one sport. And that sport takes, through that, their whole season, they have full use of that field. That is a partnership where if you were to do a land lease over a long period of time, the actual nonprofit sports league could pay for the facility use, and therefore that use, that fee that cost to buy that land or to build that park or that field does not get paid for by the citizens. It's by a private entity, a nonprofit. And then whatever that term is, at the end of that term, it gets retroed back to the community or however that's worked out. So I would offer that, while we may not have all of that put together now, that is the power of creating those partnerships. And by actually acquiring land, it gives us the opportunity to do that. If we don't acquire the land, I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would not have those opportunities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I don't know if this is, and I know we're limited on time, and I don't know if this is time or the place, but I've heard a lot about the golf on the front. And that, it really, I won't say it concerns me, but it's really interesting that we have the opportunity, and I don't know how that would look. Let's just say we had to do it for two years. There's a gentleman here by the name of Bill who's with Premier Golf. And I don't know if it's appropriate to hear from him, but one of the things that was interesting to me, and I brought this up earlier, was that they, their group is able to actually turn municipal golf courses around. And maybe they're not, you know, making a ton of money, but they're profitable enough that, let's just hypothetically say it was a two-year deal, and we had two years to get something put together. We could potentially find a partnership within that two-year period, working with Premier or somebody else like McMinniman's or whomever. And then that partnership from there forward could actually take us forward so that in reality, while we may have the councilmatic bond or whatever finance mechanism we have, that would not deter from the park impact fees that we were talking about using. Is that correct? If we have an economic driver, and we're using that economic driver, say we raise five hundred thousand or whatever it is, would that mean that we would not be using our park impact fees to pay for this?
What we would basically do is secure the bonds by the park impact fee. It's best to have a specific revenue. You don't have to, but we would designate those. But we could switch those out. It's still additional revenue coming in. So, if the council chose as a policy, you could take the additional revenue that's coming from that business or those economic engines and put it into the park fund. Those are all decisions you can make. So it's still additional revenue. That's the key.
So that's interesting because that tickles me a little bit because that means that if we create an economic driver on the Wayne Golf Course, if that engine is big enough, it could actually help pay for other parkland in our city.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I also had a number for you, just as a reference. In two thousand sixteen, the city brought in a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue for use of our fields. We're not talking about expense, though. We're just saying that there's, I understand that, but I'm just saying it's a, there is revenue associated with field use.
And we set those, we set those fees based on the expense that it costs to maintain them because we're not allowed to make money. We have to cover our expenses.
Right, but the idea that there's, that there is revenue from that is the opportunity. It's not just an open park. When you have a park, there's no economic engine whatsoever. It's just open space with a jungle gym and swings and a sandbox that has no revenue generation. All I'm saying is I'm providing information to say that sports fields do provide some revenue to the city.
Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. So, as I understand all this, all but eight acres out of the front and back nine, four on each, those are the only places we can have in any type of economic driver. The rest is passive use. And I'll be perfectly honest, when members of the community came to me and they had a vision, it wasn't that for all the Wayne Golf Course, for all those, you know, dozens and dozens of acres, it wasn't to be just passive use. They talked about mountain biking and hiking trails and different things. That's not passive, that's not what Forterra and these grants are allowing. And that was a vision of community members, and that was, you know, when they came to me. And so we're talking about a total of eight acres being, I'm on, I'll be honest, that's not a very big economic driver, eight acres. It really isn't, because you've got parking that's in there, that's gotta be in there. And so, we're very limited on the quote-unquote "economic driver." And if, in the partnership, you know, education partnerships, I think they're limited too. Because again, this is passive, the bulk of this is passive use, basically restored forest. And I don't think, as I was told, I think a lot of the community thinks there's gonna be open space that has active use to it. And that's, as I'm hearing this more and more, that's not the case. And that concerns me, that we're gonna spend a lot of money for property that is basically just there. And I know there's an ecological value to it, but I think a lot of the community thinks that they're gonna be able to mountain bike through there and hike through there and do all these different things. And we gotta be honest with them. That's not the case. There's eight acres where there's gonna be active use.
I think that's quite accurate.
No, I, my knowledge of the grant sources is hiking would be fine, nature viewing would be fine, picnicking would be fine, going out and throwing a football would be fine. You know, those sorts of recreational uses, mountain biking, not really sure, but I think it would probably be okay on a good majority of the property. So, sure, there are some of the grants that are restrictive, but under King County Conservation Futures, for example, all of those things that I mentioned, I think would be permissible uses. The surfboard grants are a little more restrictive, but in the conversations we've had with the state, I think you can still have a path that goes up to the river, for example. There's still options for that kind of recreation. What you can't do under those scenarios is build a full-blown athletic field like we had in the description or in the site plan before.
So why can't we have a, an executive par three, nine-hole course? It's open space, it's lawn, it's no, I mean, it's a field like you'd be throwing a football in.
On the front nine, I think we would have to probably do a little bit of research. The front nine, for example, you have surfboard money and conservation futures money. You might be able to put a small golf feature on that portion of the property, but you wouldn't be able to do it with the money that was bought with the surfboard funds.
And the challenge with golf is it doesn't interact well with walkers. And so you want the opportunity for individuals to be able to use those walking paths that are designed for that area. Now, whether there's like an executive putting green that's smaller, so rather than having a driving range or, you know, that you actually drive the ball, but you can putt, which is really what a lot of the executives, that's sort of the fun, team-building kind of interactive activity that people like to do, that could have a potential. But those are all things we need to explore. But passive use of walking and birding and doing all those kinds of things, don't mix well with golf. That's the challenge.
Okay. I just wanted to clear something up. I think Councilmember Sandberg misunderstood me about my comments on Shelton View and the Aquatic Center and all. I just took those out, because those things out of that total, because those were recent come-tos, just showing that we've had in the past a little over thirty-one million dollars of commitment that we have out there that's unfunded. So it wasn't, I was saying, take that off the table. It's just, that's a more recent thing, like Wayne Golf Course, Madrazo and those, these others. They're more longstanding projects that we've had out there. So I just wanted to show what we've had out there for a while versus some of these more recent big asks. I, yeah, you know, I'm okay with buying this, and I'm, but I just, I can't support a councilmatic bond. I think we just have to go to the people with a levy and do it that way. Again, if it's important to them, they'll pay for it. And it's, by going with that levy, we're not relying on re and park mitigation. And those funds can go to the things, that other thirty-one point three million that's floating out there. So I think that's an important way to go. It's just, if they want it, they'll say yes and vote for it and tax themselves for it. So, that's all I got.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I said initially that I was not lukewarm to a councilmatic bond. I still am. I do agree with Councilmember McNeil that we need to move forward on this. We made a commitment, and we need to move forward on this. I, again, will reiterate that I'm not in favor of a sports field necessarily. But I think we had an eloquent seven-year-old that just got up and said that we really need a skate park. You know, and that could be a little activity center there that the city needs. And would probably save us three million dollars compared to the skate park. So, I think we need to move forward on this. I'm gonna be interested, I would like to see if we could at least look at the assumption of the loan. I think that would be a nice way to smooth this in. And I'll be interested to see what you bring back to us.
So I think everybody had a chance. I have just a couple of follow-up questions. Do we know what the price is for the Shelton View Forest acquisition? Do we have a ballpark?
We don't. And I wouldn't want to publicly impact our negotiations, so I don't.
Okay. But there's a million from Snoamish County to back whatever part of it or all of it that we could get?
Correct.
If we have a match?
And that's not all, that's not the whole forest. So there's the DNR property, which is a huge portion of it. What we're currently targeting is the area that's owned by a developer. And they are looking at potential development for a parcel, and I can't remember how many acres it is. Do you remember?
The private development is sixteen acres, a little over sixteen acres, and the DNR land is about twenty-six acres.
So it's the private development that's currently under risk, and that's what the million was intended for.
Okay. And if we did a councilmatic bond for Wayne Golf Course, we would have the three point seven million to match or whatever we need to do to retain that one million from Snoamish County?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And then, so I'm a little confused about the use for golfing because the front nine conservation easement does allow a golf course right now. The front nine, because it's been there for twenty years.
Right, correct.
So, when we, if we became the owner, why is it that that would change? Why, all of a sudden, you can't have a golf course on the front nine anymore?
We have additional grants that we've been, that we've received to help us pay for that because we have to buy that front nine. And so those grants then limit the use of those acres.
So we'd limit that, so it's basically an eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar decision? Because those two grants are eight hundred and seventy-five thousand of the front nine?
That's correct.
So we could actually say, thanks, but no thanks. We're gonna keep our golf course, and we're gonna buy this?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to keep that option.
And I think King County would be okay with that. I think that's, right? I think that...
You know, I really, on the, Garrett Holbrook, from King County Councilmember Dombowski's office. If you use just the CFT portion and match that with city dollars instead of the surfboard dollars, the CFT money should allow it, a golf course on the site, if you were to pursue that option. The risk you would have is turning down those surfboard dollars and whether or not you could allocate them somewhere else on the site. I'm not sure how that grant would work out. But with the CFT dollars, you should be able to continue operating a golf course.
Okay. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you. So is there a potential that we could use the five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and figure out what property that equates to and put that in its special, you know, buffers, let's say, along the Snoamish River?
Potentially.
We can maybe structure it that way? Okay. And keep retaining the option. So I'll just reiterate, I want to keep our options open with this property going forward. I think it's an important investment in the future of the city that we get in. If we don't do this now, it will be sold, and we will lose the opportunity. Do we own and operate it in perpetuity? I don't know. Maybe. Maybe we don't. But we don't have those options if we don't act now. And so I think it's important that we do what we can to finance this, finance this this year. However we do that, by, again, I'm gonna reiterate, I trust in the finance department and the finance- And so I, I think it's important that we do what we can to finance this, finance this this year. However we do that, I, by, again, I'm going to reiterate, I trust in the Finance Department and the Finance Director will tell us what is the best option. She's financed much larger projects and had been able to do it. So I, I'm not really worried about the structure of the financing. I'm not going to be able to try to negotiate that from here. I don't, I'm not a finance person, so. There was a comment made and I, I think it's really important to, I, I'd like to talk about it, that, that's the potential for conflicts of interest in the sale of properties. You know, I've been on this council for over six years now and we, we did, we had the downtown project and we sold off pieces of the property. And I can tell you, I've been looking under rocks to make sure there was never a conflict of interest and I never saw one. So did a lot of the properties go to one group over another group and, you know, who their relationships were or anything like that? I've never actually got to the ground and found like, oh, look at that. There was some deal made, the sale of City of Bothell's selling property, that there was a conflict of interest.
Point of order. That's not what I was suggesting. I was suggesting that when you own a piece of property.
So what's your point of order?
My point of order is that you're mischaracterizing that I suggested that there was something improper that we were, you know, selling property unfairly to a particular property. That, that was not what I was saying.
So a point of order isn't used to interrupt people? A point of order is if I did something wrong running the meeting?
Well, you spoke to an intent, you, you placed an intent and an interpretation on what I said and that, that was not my intent and your interpretation of what I said was wrong.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make it clear that, that the, I don't think there'll be a conflict of interest involved in buying this property if we had to sell part of it. If we do a public-private partnership, I don't think there is a conflict of interest. And I've been very careful to make sure that doesn't happen while I'm here and I think all of the council members feel the same way, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
No, you may not. You're out of order.
May I have the opportunity to clarify what your mischaracterization of what I've said?
No. So.
And do I get to appeal to the rest of the body?
No. Is there something I did administratively to this meeting that you need to interrupt?
Because you're mischaracterizing what I said as something nefarious and you're suggesting that I believe that something nefarious happened in the past and it's, there is a very simple, there's a very simple explanation when you own a property.
So Councilmember Sandberg, you still don't have the floor. So you are out of order again.
And you mischaracterized what I said.
You said that again. I heard that the first few times. Thank you. I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak on this the second time, so we're going to move on. Yep.
I'd just like to reiterate what I'm going to bring back then. So, because we're going to bring back an item for a decision for the council, so I want to reiterate what I hear as consensus. Scenario number one, which is what we presented, which is buying both the front and the back nine with active space for the front, the front four acres and, and the back four acres on both parcels. What I would recommend is we'll bring funding, financing options to you and we'll be able to discuss what those options would be. And that way you have some opportunity, that's a policy decision and I appreciate the respect for the, for the Finance Director and I know that she appreciates that as well. But we want you to be involved in that decision and so we'll bring you some options for financing. We'll also bring forward maximum flexibility and so we'll work with our partners and, and look at that front nine and look at what it would be potentially then to move some grants around and see if they could be used on other areas so that we could have maximum flexibility. What I'm hearing is on, especially on the front nine, not so much on the back nine. And, and just as a, as a comment about the public-private partnerships, that's really, that's the opportunity for the city to have some control. And so if, if you just sell the parcel, then we have no control over what that is, whether there's, there's community interest, whether there's certain things that the community are looking for, certain types of businesses. And so by having that public-private partnership that we can have on both the front nine and the back nine on the four acres, that really lets us be part of the process and, and let the community be part of the process of what's, what's, what could go on those two parcels. And, and that was my intent behind the recommendation of, of the front and, and back nine four acres was allowing the city to be part of that process. So that's what I'll bring back then in June.
A point of clarification? So when you said about financing scenarios, does that include an option of loan assumption?
Yes. That's what, that's the direction I heard from the council.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move on to AB seventeen dash zero seven eight with study session establishing a downtown utilities and furniture improvements reimbursement area. And we have Mr. Feen, the Utility Service Manager, and Paul Byrne, the interim city attorney. Oh. Is it official? Is this the interim?
I think it becomes official on May sixteenth.
Okay. Interim city attorney. Before we start, we had a request to buy a council member to take a quick break, so we're going to take a recess and come back at a seven forty-five.